... thirty-four PM Tuesday, September fourth, 2018 in room one thirty-seven of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Jerome Marvin?
Here.
Mr. Susner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinga?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Let's stand as we're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two point oh one, Approval of Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes. Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Three point oh one, Introduction of New Administrators. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to call Carl Bakken, Executive Director of Human Resources, to introduce our most recent new administrators.
Good afternoon. We rounded out our hiring of administrators and we had, one of the new administrators was not able to make the meeting and he was kind enough to join us tonight, so I will introduce. There's only three tonight and we'll through that. And thank you for you guys for joining us on this rather interesting weather night and we'll get you out of here before you need a canoe hopefully. So, I'm going to start with our new administrator that we hired. Orion Thurston is the new Associate Principal at John Marshall. May I join us? Orion comes to Rochester from Ossio where he spent the last two years as a student management specialist. Prior to that, he was an administrative intern in St. Cloud and Dean of Students at Patrick Henry High School in Minneapolis. Mr. Thurston earned his bachelor's, a master's in psychology, a master's in school counseling, and his administrative certificate from Minnesota State College and University, St. Cloud. And the next two are some recent hires from our internal moves that we had late in the summer here. The first person I'll introduce is Andrew Kappel. Andrew will be the new Associate Principal at Friddell Middle School. Andrew has been with the district since 2012. His previous experience includes teaching and instructional coaching at the middle school level. He's also served as the Assistant Principal at Winona Public Schools and was most recently or currently before we pulled him for this last move hopefully, he was going to be an instructional coach at Kellogg Middle School. And then Melissa Nelson. Melissa is the new Associate Principal at Bamber Valley Elementary. Melissa has been with the district since 2013. She has served as a special ed teacher, special ed coach, and elementary special ed lead teacher and was most recently a special ed teacher and instructional coach at Friddell Middle School. So, please join me in welcoming and congratulating our new administrators.
Thank you. Three point oh two, ALC Clinic Partnership. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm going to call Julie Rozak, Coordinator of Family Engagement and Community Partnerships, to talk about a new exciting partnership that we have going on.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. I am thrilled to be here and you could already tell that I'm not alone. I brought a posse with me tonight and I'm happy to be here with them. Before I get started and talk to you about some new partnerships we have in the works, I feel it very important that we recognize why we're here and where we came from. About five years ago, a group of very dedicated volunteers came together with our former principal at the ALC Gordy Zibart to create a nonprofit that would address the physical health needs of our students at the ALC. And we have some representatives here tonight from the Rochester Student Health Services Board. This is a nonprofit, all volunteer board that has been meeting our students' physical needs at the ALC for the last five years. So, before I move forward, I was just hoping that we could all give them a round of applause and ask them to stand, any board members that are here tonight. Thank you for everything that you have done. So, these volunteers have been giving their time, their talents, effort, resources, you name it, to meeting the needs and eliminating barriers for students at the ALC clinic and it's been very successful. One of their biggest goals has been to create a sustainability model that, so that we could better address the needs of our students at the ALC clinic and potentially beyond the walls of the ALC clinic and to meeting the needs of students across the district potentially. So, from that conversation developed some more conversations and I went around making friends with all sorts of people. They're all sitting over here and that's why I'm here tonight. So, we are here tonight to announce a formal partnership with Mayo Clinic and Olmsted Medical Center. They have agreed to come on board and support the ALC clinic moving forward and we're just very proud of the work that has been happening here. Rochester Student Health Services has also agreed to support us in that transition, so they will be supporting with the free clinic as we onboard our partners with Olmsted Medical Center and Mayo Clinic. So, at this time I'd like to recognize anyone from Mayo Clinic or Olmsted Medical Center that is here with us tonight. I never thought I would know anything about CLIA waivers, HIPAA. You guys have taught me all the jargon and I'm getting really good at it, so I might get an ex officio degree and, no, I won't. I never will. I defer to all of you. So, that's one exciting partnership that I'm proud to announce tonight and we hope to come back later this school year to talk about the efforts in programming that we have developed at the ALC clinic. In addition to that, we also entered into a partnership with IMAA and Mayo Clinic to write a grant for community health workers. Community health workers are embedded within Mayo and IMAA already and last spring, I believe it was, late spring, early summer, there was a grant available to extend the community health worker program. And we are the first school district to enter into that in this area. And so, we received a grant from, uh-oh. Thank you, Armin. The Office of Higher Education, to support three community health workers here in the school district. So, we will be hiring a clinic coordinator at the ALC clinic and that person will receive the community health worker training, which is seventeen credit hours through RCTC and a certificate. And then we're also, we met with our bilingual specialists last week and we will be offering the training to two bilingual specialists here at the Edison Building to also receive that training, seventeen credit hours. And then to embed that learning around health and wellness and needs and navigating systems so that we can continue to break down barriers for our students and families so they can have what they need so that they can be successful. So, those, anyone here, I'd like to then recognize Armin and Tara. Anyone else that's here in connection with the Community Health Worker Grant? And we also hope to come back later this year and share successes of that partnership as well.
Ms. Rozak, before you sit down, and there may be other questions, but thank you so much. Clearly you have many friends and all kinds of wonderful partnerships that you have worked on. Could you just tell us briefly what IMAA is? Got a grant for that?
I knew you were going to ask.
And you don't have to know the exact, but just what it's about.
Enter, the grant?
Just what is IMAA?
Intercultural mutual.
Great, thank you. I think that's important. I'm one of those people who always likes those to be done. And then, could you in like thirty seconds, give people who are here and listening an idea about the kind of healthcare that's available for, at ALC?
That's a great question, yes. So, the model that we've been working with through RSHS is comprehensive care, not to be confused with a fast care clinic where you would just come in and have one thing addressed. What we hear from our experts at the clinic is that when a student comes in maybe with a sore toe, they take a look first at the sore toe and then enter into a conversation about other things that might be happening. So, our goal always with the RSHS clinic and as we transition is that we provide comprehensive care to students, so that we're meeting all of their needs so that they can address those needs, both physical, emotional, mental health. We have partnerships with Sumbro Valley that are already embedded at the ALC clinic and we work very closely to make sure that all of those needs are addressed.
And they can get those addressed at school?
Yes. Everything will be able to be addressed right at the ALC clinic.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Three point oh three, First Day of School. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, it's nice to know we have a week under our belt already. And at this time I'm going to have Heather Nestler, Executive Director of Communications, Marketing and Technology, to share a couple videos that were created to highlight what happened our first week.
Hopefully there's not a delay, so just stand by. Okay, hold on. There's always a delay. Just wait it out for a minute here. The first video that I'm going to show you is, was taken after an event happened at Riverside Elementary, so I'm going to queue it up with something that happened the week before school and then I'll play Back to School. Kurt? It isn't? Oh. Shoot.
Can we, we'll come back later once it gets up and working again?
Yeah.
Okay. Probably go ahead and do the board assignment updates and see if it's running. We'll come back, Kurt.
We will move ahead to three point oh four, School Board Committee Assignments Update. Are there any board members who would like to give us any information about work that they have, any committee work that they've done? Ms. Seelinga.
I attended the family engagement event with Dr. Troyer, our professional development guest last week. It was a really nice family event at Riverside Elementary, thanks to Julie Rozak who makes lots of friends, lots of places and does so much for us, for hosting us in Riverside as well. I think it was a good turnout, a nice little dinner, and Dr. Troyer, I think, did a nice job speaking to pretty much mostly our families in the district, not all of them American Indian, but it was a great opportunity, so appreciate that. Also would like to call attention to an event tomorrow evening. It's the closing reception of Framed at the Rochester Children's Museum. This is a, an exhibit that's been up for the summer with art by our Riverside students. Tomorrow night, Wednesday, September fifth, the doors will open at 5:30, a program at six o'clock. They will be unveiling the mural that we have heard some about over these last few months that will go on Riverside and the student art is amazing and wonderful and if you have a chance to get it, to see it, tomorrow is your last chance, so I invite everyone to come tomorrow.
Thank you, and just to add to that, the students have had photos taken of them and then they have turned those photos into works of art, which will become sort of the foundation for this outdoor mural, that it's going to be a sort of a paint by number type of thing. But this is a student creation with a lot of adult expertise supporting them. I think it's going to be really exciting. And Ms. Seelinga will be speaking tomorrow, but she assures me it won't be more than an hour and a half, two hours, two minutes. Two minutes, thank you. Ms. Workman.
I also attended the same event with Dr. Troyer as well as the staff development speakers during the day at John Marshall, in the morning and the afternoon. I think what really impressed me as much as anything is that how well the teachers were responding, those that I talked to, they were really fired up to listen to both of these gentlemen and I think that's just a real plus for the district, especially since they had already heard Dr. Holly before and were just wanting more. So, I just wanted to make that comment, that it was just really great to see the energy in the room and the excitement that our staff had going into the first week of school.
Thank you. Anything else? So, because I think we are still lacking media, we'll move right along to the consent agenda. This is an action item. Are there any items that board members would like pulled out for separate consideration?
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, it is with deepest sympathy that we announce that Jamie Michael Beff, Network Support Services Supervisor at Technology Support Service Center, passed away on August twenty-fifth, 2018. Mr. Beff had been with the district for six years.
Thank you. Five point oh one, Facilities Task Force Update. This is an information item. Mr. Munoz.
Well, this is also going to be a little difficult to do without slides as well.
Well, perhaps we could move ahead to approval of adult lunch price.
Up, up, we're on here. All right, come on down and let's go quick.
And we'll leave the lunch price for later. So, this is the Facilities Task Force Update.
I was going to say, we can, we can all look at it here. Since it's a board docs. There just came a bunch of questions. This is going to be a really short meeting.
Did it just come up down to the bottom? Adobe just came up at the bottom, is that it?
Well, it's up. It's up on the screen, it's just is not showing up on those screens.
We need a twelve year old.
Oh, there. Ah, look at there, folks. You know, teamwork makes the dream work. I can just make that up.
Desktop, instead of duplicate desktop.
There. Okay, so you're going to move it. No, it's probably only going to move through there. Okay. Can you man? All right. Oh, it's not down here? It's down there?
You need to change it to duplicate desktop. It's not.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Mr. Munoz, Ms. Edgar, and members of the board are happy to be back in front of you again this evening to give you an update. I'm going to let our co-facilitator introduce herself because she has not had a chance to do that yet.
I'm Marla Scarni. I'm a parent of three John Marshall graduates. I currently am a AmeriCorps reading tutor at Elton Hills. And just a little side note that the, closing the exception to attendance has made a difference at Elton Hills, so thank you.
Okay, again, this evening here, we are here to do some reviewing of our past meetings and kind of get you up to date again. So, our agenda, again, is to talk about the middle school capacity recommendations, some boundary recommendations, the district-wide option recommendations, and then our next step as a committee. So, at our last meeting, we gave you an update on our elementary capacity and also some short-term options and an update on some of those options as board members. Now, we're going to talk about our middle school capacity and ideally, the committee talked about the recommendation, the ideal size of a middle school would be about a thousand students. Preferred educational model would be a centered classroom, teacher-dedicated workspace like we currently have in our other middle schools. And on one of the slides, you'll actually see five-seven utilization, which is the teachers teach five of the seven periods in that classroom, plus they use the classroom for their prep, which doesn't allow us to use the room at a hundred percent capacity. And again, we'll talk about that in the next few slides. And some other factors that we have been going over as we were looking at our recommendation is the actual staffing of the middle schools, the overcrowding, the demographics, and the building population itself. So, on this slide, again, we'll work from left to right on your screen. It gives the square footage of our middle schools within the district and then the MDE square footage of the capacity would be the next column and our enrollment in 2017, 2018 for each one of the three buildings. And then, our maximum enrollment since 2008 is the fourth column there. And then, if we were to utilize our buildings a hundred percent capacity every classroom, every hour of the day, you would look at that enrollment in that hundred percent capacity column in the middle. Now, currently in the yellow is what we operate with right now, a seven, or excuse me, five of the seven class periods, that classroom is being used for instruction and then it also serves as a prep space for the classroom teacher and then there might be some other uses within the day if that classroom is available for that middle school. Then we talk about the core. We spend a lot of time talking about the core of these middle school and elementary buildings, but the core space is the cafeteria space needed to house those students for our lunchtime. And so, that's the column that you'll notice there. And then if we were to move to a higher capacity than what we currently would have, that would be eliminating some classroom spaces and taking those teachers out of their current classrooms and putting them in a workstation area, which then you could increase the capacity to ninety percent. But again, the yellow column is kind of where we're at. So, you see a hundred percent, then you see ninety percent, and then you see where we're at, at the five of seven class periods being taught. Okay?
Do you want questions now or do you want us to hold them till the end?
Would you prefer us to go through them?
Whatever the board wants.
Go ahead, then.
Yeah, I have two questions. For the MDE square foot capacity, that number nine fifty, is that like the middle of the road recommendation or is it the high end or the low end? Because I remember when we looked at square footage and whatnot before, we were not looking at the extreme ends of the MDE recommendation, but right smack in the middle. Do you know, have any idea where this falls?
So, I do believe it's the average or the middle, middle of the road. But again, when you're looking at capacity of existing buildings, it's not a scientific approach because you really want to look at the types of classrooms, the number of classrooms that you have and how that impacts it. If a building has, for instance, all of your buildings have, or most of your middle school buildings have pools, that adds to the square foot, but it doesn't necessarily add to the educational capacity, so that can skew things when you're looking at it from a pure square foot standpoint, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
I have one question. So, what does the total cafe capacity mean? So, you know, like for instance, John Adams, it has over a thousand students, but it says the total capacity is nine hundred and sixty-two.
So, what that starts to do is it starts to fit some of the anecdotal stories that the building feels crowded and that there's behavioral issues or things like that that can happen when you get to an overcrowding situation. So, the capacity of the cafeteria is literally taking the square footage of the cafeteria, dividing it by fifteen square feet per student, and then that gives you a number and then multiplying that number times three, figuring three lunch periods is the ideal type scenario. So, that's how we come up with the cafe or cafeteria capacity.
So, just to clarify, so that nine sixty-two is spread over three lunch periods?
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I knew it had to be because I can't imagine putting nine hundred and sixty-two middle schools in a confined space anywhere for any reason, especially not where food is involved, so.
Yeah. It's just another touch point to identify whether or not you're tracking at the right expected capacity or not, or if there needs to be a change to the core of the building. A lot of times, buildings have classrooms added and the core is inadequate, so then you might have to increase the core of a building, meaning a new cafeteria, a new kitchen, a new serving type deal in order to run that number of students through in an orderly fashion.
Yep, very similar to what we did. If you remember when we did all the K, we had to add on to the cafeteria at Gibbs to give them more capacity.
Just a question associated with square footage. So, if there are provisions for swimming pools, are there other non-educational spaces that we should be aware of? And is it possible to, maybe when we show the total square footage, to not necessarily include that?
Back those spaces out. Yep, you can certainly do that. So, pools, auditoriums are another thing that are not in the base square footage of MDE, so they would say that that would be a separate piece. And then the other piece is gyms, generally a single station gym, so about seven thousand square feet. So, if your gyms, if you have two or three high school station gyms out of middle school, that also affects that square footage calculation number as well. Those are the big spaces that can negatively or positively impact that, however you want to look at it.
Okay, so then the next step with the boundary adjustment is, why is this being done? And again, we're trying to reduce the overcrowding and the balancing the enrollment in our buildings as much as we can and one of the slides coming up here does a nice job of showing the balancing that we're trying to do with this. How long and when? Well, our goal was to look at this for 2019 and we were projecting out 2022 because if we do look at a referendum at a possible building, that would be the soonest that that would come online. So, this is kind of a short-term solution for us with the boundary adjustments. And then, will more adjustments be required? Well, the future enrollment is increasing and we're trying to create those guidelines for you as a board and adopt and also look at additional capacities that we can get out of these buildings as well in this process. And then, do the boundary recommendations impact the middle and high school? No, they do not. This recommendation here does not impact the middle or high school boundaries. Okay, and then the boundary recommendations for our elementaries, we continued to talk about trying to make sure that we were able to keep as many students within walking distance of the school, their neighborhood school as we could, and then also attempt to reduce schools that were over a hundred and ten percent utilization and reduce that number and then also the buildings that were below ninety percent utilization, we tried to bring those buildings up in their utilization as well. So, the next slide kind of breaks this down for you. So, you take the current enrollment of this school year and as you can see, Elton Hills, Franklin, and Jefferson are at that hundred and eight, hundred and nine percent and within utilization. And then, you look on the left-hand side and we're talking about Elton Hills, it's thirteen, thirty-seven students over, Franklin is forty-eight, and Jefferson is fifty-two students over. So, as we tried to adjust and look at some attendance boundaries, those were some of the benchmarks that we used as to how many students do we need to look at? And then also Churchill was fifty-four students under and Hoover was sixty students under that ninety percent utilization. Okay? Did I get that all right? Okay, so some assumptions. Students currently in the district-wide option will continue to be in the district-wide option, that's Lincoln, Longfellow, Washington, Gage, Spanish Immersion, Montessori at Franklin. Students currently on an exception to attendance from their home school to another attendance boundary area, they will be able to continue in that building with our assumptions here. And then also, we are looking at the enrollment numbers of August of 2018 currently as we were doing this. Ms. Workman.
Yeah, so, is the assumption then that, what I hear you saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, I know you will, is that students who are currently going to a different boundary school will be allowed to continue? Are we freezing then exceptions to attendance to attend another school?
That's something that we'll handle on the management side, which we currently did for this school year. We've closed Gibbs and Elton Hills to exception, so we'll continue to manage that on our end wherever we need to.
So, if I understand this, does this mean that students who live in, say, the Gage area, but they're not there but they're not there as a district-wide option, they may be forced to move to a different school?
No.
No?
District-wide option students will stay.
Yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
They're just going to stay, but if their regular attendance school is Gage, they're not there because it's an option. They're there, you know, because that's where they live. And if we're going to reduce Gage, we're going to be taking students that would normally go to that school and then take them to a different school?
So Gage isn't one of the impacted buildings, but we can talk about the impacted buildings?
Okay, bad example.
Yeah, well, yeah, so when we get to it, you'll see, so some of the students, because of the boundary change, would actually change facilities.
So in that case, district option would continue to be favored over those who live in the neighborhood? That's the impact of it.
And we do have a district-wide piece after the boundary recommendation where you'll see.
I just wanted to make sure there.
Future.
That's one of the impacts or not.
Okay, so then the next slide, we looked at the utilization in 2017. And as you can see, the dark center, which is more of a burgundy color, which is the Elton Hills area and the Ben Franklin area, is our highest capacity at 110%. And then Churchill Hoover is at the lower end of our utilization, which is below 80%. So that's a kind of a snapshot of the geographic areas of those buildings. So then you look at 2018, and based on our enrollment and what we're recommending in the next couple of slides, you notice that those deep burgundies are decreasing. And also, we're increasing the capacity of Churchill Hoover in our process here. Okay? Now to Mr. Smith's question. This next slide kind of talks at length about the number of students at each one of our buildings. And are they currently at our building? Are they in a different building because of daycare, exceptions to attendance, and those types of things? So that template there explains that pretty well in detail. And again, it's kind of small on the monitor. That one, thank you. Okay, so then the next slide. As the committee looked at the possible changes for recommended changes, we are looking at three different areas here with this impact. All to decrease the overcrowding at Jefferson or the overcrowding at Elton Hills. And then it would also increase the capacity or the utilization of Churchill Hoover. So if we go to the top part of the screen, which would be the next slide, I think there.
The next slide is just an aerial.
Yep, the next slide is kind of an aerial with the streets defined a little bit better. And again, the next slide would be the Elton Hills area that is south of 37th Street. And to the east of Noel Court would now go to Churchill Hoover is the recommendation in that snapshot. The next snapshot is along Broadway, south of Elton Hills, Rec Center, all the way down to, I think it's 7th Street, if I remember right. That area would also go to Churchill Hoover, which is currently an Elton Hills section. And then the last slide is taking the north half of 37th Street, east of the river. And that was a Jefferson area, and it would now be going to Churchill Hoover. Any questions so far on those? Did I explain those well enough for you? Ms. Selinger?
Yes, you explained them well enough, but I do have a question. Thank you. So on the previous slide, when it talks about Elton Hills to Churchill Hoover and Jefferson to Churchill Hoover and the number of students. So it says 67 total K5 students. Out of the 67 total K5 students in those areas, 38 attend Elton Hills. Not that one, the one with the writing on the side. That one.
That one.
Yep. So, okay, so 38 attend Elton Hills. So we know where the, whatever the, whatever 29 students that are different, right, who don't go there, they may be at a district-wide or they may be at an exception. Would those students be allowed to go back into their neighborhood boundary if it moves to Churchill?
So I think the easy answer to that is yes, they would still be able to choose their neighborhood school. That would then, of course, start to push that capacity up again, which then would keep that open enrollment piece closed to deal with that kind of renewed increased capacity again.
Okay. Do you have any concerns about that?
With it being 29 students? And part of the issue that you have with your schools, because they're such small schools, two and three-section schools, it's not so much the 29 kids. It's if it's seven or eight kids in one grade level that creates the problem. So is there concern, mild concern? But you guys have been dealing with that for a period of time already. So I think it's something that you'd have to react to depending on if it happens and at what level.
Go ahead, Dan.
So my question is very similar to Director Selinger's. And that is where households may be informed that they are part of that demographic. Will they be told they have to? Will they be asked to consider? I suppose I'm more concerned about the messaging of how maybe even parents who are viewing tonight's meeting may hear of this and what we are planning to anticipate of the concerns they may have. And so Superintendent Munoz, I suppose that would be more so a question directed to you.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd probably do it the same way we did last spring. We'd inform families, this is, you're going to be impacted by boundary changes as far as what you'll probably hear from them. Probably the same thing I told you back in spring. You're going to hear the same rationale for why you shouldn't do it that we heard in the spring. But we will communicate tonight is just a, that's why it's an information item. Next meeting will be a briefing, and then we'll ask you to vote on it in October. Tonight, there's more to get feedback from the board. And then at the task, next task force meeting, they'll make adjustments if needed. If we end tonight with no recommendations from the board to make changes, and then we can go to the next step to inform parents that you will be impacted by a boundary change. It's going to be briefed to the board at September, whatever our next September meeting is. So we will communicate that way through our Sky Alert system. But we've made families very aware of what's going on already and invited people to the Citizen Voice meetings. They're very public and publicized, so they've always had an opportunity to attend those. But I think we learned back in 2012, I don't always pay attention to that kind of stuff until I find out it's impacting my child, and then that's when we come to the board. So after tonight, based on input we get from the board, we will inform those families that will be impacted by the recommendation that will be briefed to you in September. So they'll know at that time for sure, if they don't know already.
Just listening.
I got a question for you. I probably would have asked had I not been away on travel at the last task force meeting. But a potential recommendation is if we're looking to reduce the number of schools over 100%. And I look at the 2018, 19 enrollments of friends at Longfellow. I see that it looks like they're at 335 of 360, so they have decent capacity there. But yet, one of their neighboring schools, Franklin, is overcapacity. And if we're looking to do the adjustments for the next three years, and we have a school that's overcapacity next to a school that's undercapacity, is there a particular reason why we didn't make that recommended change as well?
Yep, I can address that. We did, we've been in communication with Longfellow. And I think, Chris, their principal said he could take probably another 25 students. But that is our 1-1 school. So 25 students requires the purchasing of 25 iPads as well, which I don't know where we would find that money to do that. So that's one of the things that we are trying to figure out. What we could do, we could bring Franklin down a little bit by just, if you looked at Montessori at Franklin, we could just shift some kids into the Montessori program and bring that down a little bit and then bring up Montessori up. Or if, as I said, this is just an information item. If the feedback we got from the board was, we want you to look at addressing Franklin, another way we could try to carve off a sliver of Franklin and send them either to Riverside. If I remember right, Pinewood didn't have too much space. But Riverside, the only issue we have there is we have to be careful that we don't put more students of poverty into that school that we're going to increase their free and reduced percentage. So, yep, the board would recommend that we, that the task force look at addressing, see if we could bring Franklin down a little bit. We do have a couple of options that we've kind of been talking a little bit about.
Ms. Workman. Yeah, concerning the Franklin issue, or I'm sorry, the Longfellow issue is that if we're actually informing parents that their kids who are currently at Ben Franklin are going to go to Longfellow, we're really talking, telling them you need to be in a district-wide choice option. And I would think that those families, if they had already wanted that option, would already be there as opposed to moving in the same, in the same situation with the Montessori program, even though it's a school within a school.
That's possible. We haven't looked at the students on the waitlist for Montessori. There very likely could be some students from Franklin that waiting to get in there. But we don't have space right now, but we could create space.
And then two follow-up questions. With the Longfellow population, I know there was going to be an effort to include more students who are actually from the neighborhood in that school. I'm not going to ask for details on how you're monitoring that, but that could be a factor in terms of the enrollment for Longfellow next year from?
Oh, I do know, I won't say half, but close to half of their incoming kindergarteners were from the neighborhood.
Okay.
So, and I do know if they have a sibling and we happen to have space at that particular grade level, that they would, they could take them as well.
And then my final follow-up, now this is the last one I promised maybe, is for families who have two or more students in an elementary school right now, say their student is in kindergarten and they have another one in third grade and they're, or fourth grade, and they're going to be moved to a different school, would the older student be permitted to stay at the school that they'd already spent four years in? Or would they be moved just for one year?
Well, our past practices is we've allowed them, if it's their last year, to allow them to finish their last year at that school. That's something that we would work on individual, case by case, but that's been our past practice.
I realize too, there are many families who aren't going to want to have two elementary schools to go to either. So it could go either way. Thank you.
So if we are moving kids to a different elementary school, would they still go to the same middle school that they would have? So that's going to be?
Yeah. Yeah, so those two pockets of Elton would go to Churchill Hoover, and then they'd go back to JA for middle school and JM for high school.
Okay. And while having kids at two different elementary schools isn't the most ideal, but it does work.
They're not in the same classroom anyway.
Just for some clarity on Longfellow, I believe this last spring, the administrators then requested that they become a primary neighborhood school with district-wide option as secondary. Because his feelings at the time was there's more than enough students within the neighborhood to fill the school. So if they're, half the class coming in is neighborhood, which is great, because that's what they wanted. There should be enough on the waiting list to at least fill the school to capacity.
As I said earlier, we have the capacity for 25 students. Just finding the money to buy the 25 iPads is kind of what we're trying to figure out at this time.
Ms. Selinger.
So thanks for, to Mr. Director Schlesner for bringing this up. So why is there nothing about Franklin on this presentation?
So again, Franklin is surrounded by other buildings, with the exception of district-wide option of Longfellow that are in the high 90s already. So you're kind of just shifting the problem from one building to the next.
So, so the committee feels that there is, there is not really a solution for Franklin that you have come up with, that you're bringing to us right now?
So the second piece to the recommendation from the task force was to use the district-wide option preference to try and reduce that. So if the boundary change happens, then Franklin becomes the highest capacity building. And so then those students would be giving, would be the first students moved into a district-wide option that they had selected if there's room within that district-wide option. And we do go through that right after the boundary adjustment.
Yep, yep, and I appreciate that that's coming in. Mr. Brown.
And I just wanted to be sure I understood, Director Deborah, when you make reference to Franklin, are you concerned about Montessori or Franklin as a whole? I'm just curious.
Franklin as a whole, because the slide is talking about schools above 105% utilization, and Franklin is 108%. And I just dawned on me that it hadn't been discussed by the task force, but totally understand.
Yeah, I do. I think when we put, I personally consider them one school. When you put them together, they're at 104% capacity when you don't separate them as two separate schools.
I have two questions. I understand this is a short-term fix. Because we do have so many discrepancies. But in terms of where you are moving kids from and where you're moving them to, we still, even with this fix at this time, there's still some real discrepancies in terms of free and reduced lunch and racial discrepancies between schools. Some sort of notable discrepancies. Is this, is this sort of the best we can do short-term? I mean, without making major boundary changes throughout the city? Is this the best we can do in terms of trying to get a better balance of economic and racial?
Because it is such a short-term and the impacts to transportation and other logistics, not to mention the actual impacts to the schools themselves. I think, you know, we took a look at it to make sure that we didn't dramatically change it one way or the other with these changes. But I do think that in 2022, when you have the other piece, that's when you make the wholesale modifications or look at what it might look like. You're still, I mean, cities predominantly have neighborhoods that vary. And schools, if they're going to be neighborhood schools, you have that differential. So the biggest thing you can do is try and get your facilities to a position where they can draw in students from other areas. But that affects busing, that affects transportation, all those types of things. It's not an easy solution. But the long-term one will look at it much heavier than what the short-term version looked at it.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate this slide because it's certainly something that has to be considered, that we know that schools are better when the population is really diverse. So appreciate that. And my second question is, I think that we have a citizens' facilities group working on this is excellent. And I know that that's a large group and with many different perspectives. And that we have to look at the data. Will the, everybody else hears that, not just me, right?
Hear what?
At least it's not taken cover.
It's just a flashlight.
So is there, do we need to?
No.
So Scott's going to go out there and tell us that the hurricane is coming farther north than it was supposed to be. But, you know, we've been through this experience relatively recently. And so my question is, have you spoken to, or is it even appropriate to speak to building administrators and ask them what their recommendation would be? And I'm not saying you should do this, but one of the things that we did was to talk to building administrators during the last, and staff, and say, is your building overcrowded? What do you need, just to get information? Because we had a couple of buildings on this list that said, you know what, we're good. We've got the numbers. It looks like we're overcrowded, but we're really, we have the space that we need. So I'm just throwing that out there. I don't need an answer, but it, that was the information we were getting because of programs that they had at their buildings that weren't really considered in terms of numbers. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Sure, and, and I agree in support if you're not just suggesting, but requesting that the administration or the committee actively solicit input from the building administrators, I think as a board, we could certainly do that. And I think that is a valuable voice to hear and one that should be considered. Was that your intent? I don't know, but...
Well, I just, I don't know if you've done that, but it was just an experience that, that we had and that may or may not, may or may not apply here.
We have not spoken to the building administrators. That is certainly a step that we can do and, and bring that information forward to the task force.
Okay, and that being said, I know that you know, and we're keenly aware, that there is all kinds of emotion that's involved when you go through this and that that cannot be the determining factor in making a good decision. But sometimes there are, there's factual information you can get from the buildings that might not show up just by the raw numbers. Other questions, comments?
Let's zip forward a couple here. Oh, too far. Okay, so as our district-wide option again, one more. Again, just to recap, the district-wide options are Lincoln K-8, Longfellow 4515, and Washington Core Knowledge Curriculum. And then we have the shared facilities with Montessori at Franklin and then the Spanish Immersion. So those are currently the district-wide options. Now, in the next slide, as we've talked at length about this process of the district-wide options, that current selection process, sibling preference, Longfellow neighborhood preference, and then random selection of students from the list. And then we also talked about the recommended process against sibling, Longfellow offer to students in the over-capacity grade levels within the waiting pool and then go to the random selection process. And then the strengths of this would be optimizing our enrollment in our buildings. Only moving students that have expressed interest in changing schools eases some of the overcrowding, some of the overcrowding. This district-wide option, we're just not sure how many students, the administration has done a great job of increasing the capacity at those buildings already for this school year, and so how many seats are really still available? Weakness, again, we may exclude some students that could be walking to their neighborhood school, moving students mid-year if they're accepted into the program. And will this really provide relief? Second sibling in the building as a preference is, moving that, shifting that recommendation, is that fair? And then are there future things that we have not considered with this district-wide option? Okay? So then this...
I think, well, you were there too when, with a public meeting, the issue of fairness seemed to be a really big piece that a lot of the, a number of people were concerned about. How would you recommend that we or the superintendent move forward in addressing that? I mean, somebody's probably going to feel like whatever you're doing to their student is not fair regardless, but I think, you know, some of their concerns were valid.
Well, I can say, and I'll commend the task force, the very first time we met with them, we said, you're here as a, as a task force and looking objectively at all the data and all the information and not trying to say what's best for my child. And that's why they made this recommendation. The last comment was by somebody that was at, I think, one of the citizens' meeting, which probably was going to impact their child, I'm assuming, but really, we've asked the group to just keep emotion and stuff out of it and just look at the data and the facts that you have and make recommendations to the board. And ultimately, it's going to be up to the board. If, if the board doesn't want that preference to be added to it, we just go back to the task force and say the board doesn't want that as one of the options, so. But it was just, as they looked at the last year's district-wide option capacity, they were beyond capacity, all of them. We've been a little more aggressive this year on filling them up and we will, I think I shared with you in our last meeting about this, we will be the ones that will monitor them throughout the year. Right now, we just found out we, a couple of fifth graders moved out of the school. So, we're going to not, in the past, the school would be responsible for reaching out to somebody that's on the list and saying, we have two spaces. So, we'll monitor that part, so we think we can keep that. Capacity's currently where it's at. But the task force was looking at the data at that time. It looked like, gosh, we got to do something to get those district-wide option schools' capacity up higher. And that's why they thought if you took out of the high capacity and fed them into district-wide, a good way to balance them out, yeah.
Mr. Smith.
You know, it'd be easy to second guess all the hard work that's been done. I'm not going to do that. I'd just say I appreciate the, the work that's being done on this. It's not a simple, simple thing to do and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you all came into this with objective views and not thinking about it from a personal standpoint. Because no matter what we do, there are going to be students impacted and not, and, you know, it's a question of, if somebody's getting impacted, they're probably not going to be happy. But we don't have a choice if we're going to level, level set the facility. So, I'd say thank you for the, the, the work that you've done to date and I look forward to see, see more of it.
Ms. Workman.
One, one of the things that I'm, I'm getting the feeling for from the task force, which I really appreciate a lot, is that you're really looking at the big picture overall and using these numbers to actually make the best decision, best recommendation, because you don't make a decision, the best recommendation that you can to the board with the information that you have collected. And I really applaud them for doing that because it's not easy.
Thanks. We'll take that information back to the committee members because it is important. It's, it's not easy work. It's very heavy work as we go through all the information that Kevin and his staff have supplied us with. And sometimes it's very overwhelming to try and stay at that 50,000 feet to look at all students within Rochester Public Schools rather than just a select few. And I think the committee has done a really good job with that.
I agree. Mr. Brown.
Just one quick question. Some of the schools impacted, Elton Hills, Hoover, there is a major housing complex being completed over by, off of 37th where Think Bank is. Any consideration as to that, the possible impact upon those schools or this plan?
So right now, we're in the process of doing the housing study that would indicate the generation rate, I'll call it, of the students within a complex like that. That'll also tell us how quickly those students are going to show up within your schools. You know, if, if it's new families, you've got five years and you're beyond that 2022 and it impacts the overall boundary adjustments and whatever capacity adjustments are being made to the district. So, it becomes a piece for that next step that, that the task force has to look at. If during this process, it looks like it's going to generate a number of kids at the, at the lower grades or all the way through it, then that may be one of those driving factors where you may have to do another boundary change in 2020. I hate to say that, but your schools again, aren't really large enough to take influxes without actually changing boundaries or indicating small modifications if you have a concentration come in. So, it is a possibility that you may have to do something else again before 2022, but the hope is that these steps will allow you to balance until then.
Anything else?
On the district-wide option recommendations, you know, I think this is, it, it's always had a lot of attention and energy around the process and choosing the, the district-wide options and which ones and how often and how many and families choose. I, I, I agree that, you know, this could be a, potentially a tough sell if we said, well, your kid goes to Franklin, so you move up on the list to go to Longfellow. Creating a scenario. But I also think it could be a really great opportunity for our district-wide option schools and our, and our entire school community to, you know, maybe do some marketing or directed marketing around those schools and from the schools that, you know, have, are over-capacity to those students to say, hey, have you thought of, you know, we know that most families would prefer to start at a school and end at that school. That just makes the most sense and probably is easiest for most people. But at the same time, if those district-wide options are good choices for a family's kids, you know, I would support getting more of those kids into those programs if we have the, have the space to do it, no matter if they're coming in kindergarten or if they're coming in third grade. So, I just would like to look at that as a, a potential for betterment, not necessarily as a weakness.
Thank you.
Okay, and then our last slide is just our next steps as a task force. We're going to start looking at the high school capacity, the options to increase that capacity. Again, still looking at these long-term boundaries, boundary adjustments, if you guys end up giving us feedback on our recommendations. Again, we're still looking at that equity piece as we drive forward here and sites, locations and possible scope of a referendum. So, that's the work ahead of us.
Any last questions? Ms. Ylenker.
So, thank you, Ms. Carney, for being here. And speaking a little bit to your experience at Elton Hills. I think one of my challenges, and this isn't necessarily a, a question I expect you to answer, but maybe to take back to the task force. When I look at boundary adjustments and look at the number of students, one of the considerations I feel I have to look at is how many students are we talking about? Because our students are, are students, right? They're not just a number, they're not a, a percentage. And I know there's no perfect answer, but what is that sweet spot, right? When we're talking about, when I go back to that slide on Elton Hills and 38 of those students in that area attend Elton Hills, that seems like kind of a small number, right? It's, it's a little over a classroom. But what is the impact on the school that they would be leaving, right? And you talked about even just closing, the exception to attendance has made a difference. And I don't expect you to know how many or, or anything like that. So it, it's more kind of that philosophical piece that for me, as a, as a decision-maker, how am I best going to make those decisions? Because when I look at a number like 38, I might think, gosh, that's not very many. Do I really want to disrupt 38 kids? I know we're talking about a bigger number, right? So, so I guess maybe back to the task force is to help us understand what 38 kids looks like at Elton Hills to take those kids out, to, to, to move them, you know, to make a life, kind of a life-changing decision to move those kids. I don't know if you want to speak to that now, later, whatever, but that's just things that I've been thinking of.
I guess I would need a little guidance on what you, what you're looking for. I mean, we show you how it drops their capacity percentage, but what more are you looking for?
Did you want to?
Yes. The classroom space is one thing, but the core space, the media center, the, you know, the shared spaces, the, the gym cafeteria, that seems to be where the biggest impact is of having this larger number of students. It's nice when you go into the classroom and there's space. You can actually walk, or the kids can actually walk in a classroom. So it's, I think it's, the classroom is one issue, but I think the shared common space, that's where we're seeing that...
Biggest piece of relief?
Yes.
Okay. That is exactly what I needed to hear. So thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Before we go, I guess, so we can give a little guidance to the task force for the next meeting, I, I think there's two things that need to be resolved, not voted on, but at least consensus on the district-wide option piece that they're recommending. And then the third one, we had a little discussion by a couple of board members about Franklin. Do you want the task force to look at something that would bring Franklin's capacity down a little bit or are you okay with where it's at?
I would say yes, because there is some construction in that part of town as well. Yes, to looking at Franklin and seeing if that could be reduced.
So is that the consensus of the board?
I agree.
Yeah, I think we should look at that.
I would certainly welcome you looking at it, although you've expressed that there might not be any suggestions. I don't know if that's something that's going to come back in your long-term boundary adjustments that might be. I would be comfortable with that as well.
Well, that's a majority right there. So how about the district-wide option piece?
The one piece with the district-wide options, I think most of what you're talking about makes perfect sense. I would be, I think it would be difficult to tell families that their children are going to be moved into Longfellow if they really don't want to go. I mean, and I'm hoping that that can be resolved by just having students on the waiting list go there, but telling a family that they might have a middle school student, high school student, then an elementary school student on a whole different schedule, I think that's, I, I don't have a problem with kids getting switched from one school to the next. I said before, my family had that experience and all my kids, as far as I know, are alive and thriving and they, you know...
I went to three different grade schools.
Well, Mr. Smith, that's, yeah.
Well...
But I mean, I think...
That's worked really hard.
We say that with love, Mr. Smith. And I think that, that students often take their cues from their parents, you know, is this a tragedy that they have to go to a different school or is it an, an opportunity? I, I do understand the emotion, but I'm not convinced that it's going to be a, a life wrecker for anyone. I think inconvenience though of having a family being told your elementary school student will be going to Longfellow, when it's so substant, the schedule is so substantially different, I have...
We would only take, we would only take kids that signed up.
So that, right.
From that, from that 4515 that...
Okay.
Would be, for example, from Franklin, would get a nod before we do a random drop.
And that, I think, sounds great.
My family signed up for district-wide options. It seemed like the family norm was sign up for all of them.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess we got consensus on both of those, so.
Thank you.
And, and Jane, we, we're finished with that, but I just wanted to be sure that what I'm hearing, we're not minimizing the impact that students or families have when during the course of any given school year, they may transfer to a different school. We're not suggesting that that's no big deal. I think I've heard as a board member and am very much aware that there are many families within this district that move their child voluntarily from school to school many times during the course of the school year. And, and we definitely can say that that affects their ability to excel and to take full advantage of the opportunities we provide. So, I, I guess I just wanted to confirm that 38 or whatever the number may be, we're not suggesting that that will not be an impact upon those students.
Thank, thank you. I think we're going to return to 3.03, the first day of school.
Heather, we're going to try the videos again.
An important shift this year when we talked about the...
Good volume.
You want to set this one up before we...
I do. This is the Riverside, this is from Riverside and this happened before school started. And Principal Rizik will talk about what you're about to see, but it happened, we recorded it after the fact. We didn't know about it when it happened, but we were able to gather some pictures off of the social media and then put a story and narrative to it, which is one of the most beautiful things about social media.
An important shift this year when we talked about the campaign of I'm Ready was really a focus on ourselves and being reflective. We got T-shirts... We got T-shirts that said "I'm Ready," that is really just like a mantra in regards to what our thinking is, that I'm ready for your kids, I'm ready for my students. And all of our staff went out, about 60-some-odd people, took to the streets, some in cars, some on feet. We really just went to say, "We love you, we can't wait for you to come back, and we're so grateful that you choose to come to school."
It was a great experience. We were able to get into our community, because we are a community school, and meet our students, meet our families where they live, in their authentic environment.
It was amazing, because we, me and Thor both got our teachers that we wanted, I got Mr. Smith's. It was really surprising.
The families opened their doors to us, and we're really surprised.
Very exciting. I wasn't really expecting that, because I just woke up.
It was meaningful as a teacher and something that I can bring back to the classroom, to be able to understand and even build a deeper relationship with my students, understanding where they're coming from.
Our school is our neighborhood, and our classrooms are not confined by four walls, our classroom is the community.
Continuing that process this year, having it be something that we're, that's part of what we do here at Riverside.
Just one of the many things that are happening in our district. And now I'm going to just queue up the first day of school. And I've got to drag that. And this is a video that. This is something that our communications team and Ritz put together, and I'll make it bigger. And I'll start it from the beginning.
Forward to you, for you to review and to approve so that we could open up this purchase order so that we could pay that bill as it comes in on a monthly basis.
Mr. Smith.
I assume that since schools are still probably providing the services now?
Yes, we are.
So if I move this to action, also move it to action.
Let's, it's been moved and seconded to move it to action, then Mr. Barlow, I'll call you.
I don't have a second.
I did.
Deborah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Um, any discussion, Mr. Barlow, you had a question?
Just wanted to, so these money is already presently in the budget, correct?
Yes, it is. I have to look over to my business finance person for that quick nod. Yes.
Okay, all in favor of moving this to action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's an action item. Be it resolved that the school district of, um, independent school, the school board of independent school district five thirty-five does hereby approve the purchase of crossing guard services for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year from express employment professionals in the estimated amount of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Schurden. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute section one thirteen D point oh five subdivision three B to receive confidential legal advice from the school board's attorney regarding strategy and options related to a legal proceeding involving the school district. I now ask for a motion for the board to go into closed session pursuant to the law I cited.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session.
Reced.
We are now, we are now recessed.
Bring your devices.
Missed you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to sign up for that or just that whole pile from our other?
Oh, here. I put the dates on there too. Thanks, Wendy.
That'll do stuff for her.
No, this is all this she I have heard in hers during the closed session so you guys can be all done. Trying to be nice so people can get home. We are reconvened at seven forty-seven PM. Uh, we had, the district has continued to have a discussion with the Minnesota Department of Human Rights about our collaboration agreement with them. And at this time, um, and we've come to an agreement, at this time, um, I would like a motion to approve the Minnesota Department of Human Rights and Independent School District 535 collaboration agreement.
So moved.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And now we are adjourned at seven forty-eight PM.